Okay, I think we'll call the evening to order this 5:30. Do you have four?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Six. Yes. Okay, can you stand and say the budgets please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Carla, could you say the prayer first?
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this night, we are grateful for the many blessings that we have been provided in this time, in this land. We are grateful for families and friends, coworkers. We ask a blessing to be with this board and with this audience that we might come together for the common good, that we might have thy Spirit to guide us and direct us without which would benefit this hospital, this county, and our people. For this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Since Connie is... This is Connie's last meeting. We had so little for her.
Oh, shoot, I thought you were going to be presenting to somebody else.
Who is this?
A plant.
Listen, that is gorgeous. You may know.
See if I can kill it. Thank you.
Thank you for your many years of service. How many?
Twelve.
Twelve years of service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Connie, thank you for everything. Thank you for being a wonderful mentor. And thank you for, like Leanne said, all your years of wonderful service. It just can't be matched. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Now, where do we want to start?
Put it in my house.
For the bride and brother being, yeah.
Okay. Honor of employee is going to be done by Connie James.
See, I thought that's what you were calling it.
I know.
You did. Okay. All right. So, this is from... Am I supposed to say this from? I will. That's what I want, right? Well, this is from Melissa. It says, "Mac is a hard worker and shows dedication not only to our residents, but also her staff. She is always available and comes in on her days off to keep up with things and to correct anything that may need correcting. I can't even hold... I can't ever get ahold of her in her office because she was always out working on the floor and providing everyone with the best service possible. She goes above and beyond to make sure everyone is happy and well-fed. She truly is the epitome of hard work and dedication. Should be Employee of the Month. On being here, residents, but the staff all around the facility. She helps every department in one way or another as much as she can. Michaela puts her staff first before herself on many different occasions and is not only a boss, but a friend. You can go to her for just about anything and she will always find a way to help you. Michaela loves being here for the residents and goes above and beyond daily to make them happy. She always puts them first in every situation. Michaela is a great manager because she is always helping her staff progress in the kitchen in more ways than just cooking. She would work doubles and overtime before she would ask her staff to come in on their days off. There are just a couple of reasons... These are just a couple of reasons Michaela should be Employee of the Month. She is a great asset to the facility and having her here makes it a better place the residents and staff are lucky to have.
Here's your note.
You need a picture of these.
And two of my local staff members, Dakota and Heather, are here. Can you take one with them?
Sure.
Stand up, I'm making me...
Say those nice things, you gotta be in the picture.
Thank you.
Okay, the next session. Section five is for business comments. I'm going to limit that to three minutes. Please limit it to three minutes of comments. We have a long agenda.
I'd like to speak, if that's okay? My name is Christine Colbrand. I'm one of the providers over at the clinic and I just wanted to speak in front of everybody today. First of all, I want to thank West County Health Services and the community for their support over the last 20 years. I started here as a CNA and would have never thought that I'd be where I am now. And I couldn't have done it without all of their support and coworkers who became my family and all the departments that I've worked in. There's always been ups and downs that we're able to work through and always came out better than before through everything. Over the years, I've been committed to improving the facility with all the improvement projects, working on committees, working as Secret President Director, just anything that I could do to make the facility better. The success was vital to our community. I was always proud to say that I worked for this facility, but over the last year and even more in the last couple of months, things have really changed. I don't necessarily think I can say that anymore, but I'm proud to be part of this. We have a board that claims to be transparent, but frequently has special board meetings with short notice, so the public can't make it. That might not be the intent, but perception in the public is that things are being hidden and that they don't want the public involved. In the town hall meetings, community members brought forth concerns and what is missed and excuses made rather than validating concerns and addressing them. Employees brought up concerns during these meetings and were dismissed and not validated. None either. It took a lot for them to speak up when there's a culture of fear and retaliation that they still spoke up and had dismissed. There was comments made that the board can't do anything about people leaving or that if the board's dealing with changes or that if we brought forth concerns that they would be addressed if we did specific concerns. A group of us filed grievances on specific concerns that we didn't feel like we're being addressed by our supervisors and management. We had executive sessions to address it and still didn't feel like our concerns were even validated or by most people. There were some that did, but then we weren't even worried of response from the board. The grievance policy says that there should be a response in ten days, but we didn't get a response at all. And I know there's going to be the excuse that the grievance policy wasn't followed and that's why we didn't, but we did not get any response to our grievances. But if it was taken as far as giving us an executive session to listen, then we at least deserve a response. And that all leads up to my point of coming here tonight. I became to the realization that my beliefs align with the mission, vision, and values of West County Health Services, but they don't align with the values currently shown by the administration and board. And I submitted no letter of resignation. So, it'll be done like April 19.
Okay. Thank you, please. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay. We'll move forward with... Any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay. We're going to add Durbin and Associates under finances. Do you want to put it first?
Yes.
So, we'll change that to one, FY '24 to two, and then the finance committee report. Any other changes or additions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. So, we're going to strategic initiatives. So, finance with Mr. Thomas. Is it Thomas? Tommy...
How are you, Rob?
Durbin Associates.
Hey, guys, how are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. Randy asked me to jump on and kind of give you an update. I was there almost two months ago. Actually, I think it was two months ago. Kind of talking about what our goals and our plans were. Just wanted to get the board to update where we are. We are still waiting on the 6:30 2023 audit to be wrapped up. We did not want to waste time here to do our effort working on numbers that were going to be essentially audited. And we believe that audit was going to be done sooner, for whatever reason, it's not been done. We have spent time looking at overall adjustments and overall, you know, kind of what has changed. And there are still large entries that have been made. There have been large entries that were made to your 6:30 23 books at the end of February, on 2/28, actually. And so, we've gotten it down to a list of about 14 or 15 accounts out of yesterday that we're still waiting on reconciliations for for 6:30 and '23. Once those reconciliations have been provided and were updated, you know, numbers have been adjusted accordingly, you know, the audit can go ahead and continue to wrap... Continue to move on and wrap it up. But once we know that those adjustments have been made, then we can start kind of looking at what's going on through fiscal year '24. And so, that's kind of the update of where we stand. We have spent time. We've gotten a lot of data regarding your June 30 23 numbers, but we don't want to spend time looking at '24 if we know that your baseline's going to be adjusted accordingly through your... Through the audit.
So, how's your response to getting information? Okay? Or is there a holdup on our end, or?
Well, we've had some, you know, going back and forth as far as, you know, us asking for information. The data has flown pretty well with us or back to us. But now, we're just down to the point of making sure that we have all the most up-to-date and final reconciliations. I know there's an email today kind of discussing this with the firm that's working on it of what are the final reconciliations and where do they live. I know Sandy's working pretty close to make sure we have everything we need. So, data is flowing, but it's a matter of making sure that, you know, the 6:30 23 basically our baseline is taken care of so we can move forward into '24.
Do we have any questions, Durbin, this way?
So, I had understood, and maybe I'm correct me, I thought that they were helping with reconciliation stuff. Was that just a misunderstanding?
No, that was Casey Peterson.
Who are Casey Peterson and reconciliation?
Yeah, so we...
Yeah, I do remember.
Yeah, there's three agreements with Casey.
And so, that's what they're waiting for.
Right.
We got one more of that. Do you have a timeline on that?
I have not seen a timeline through from Casey Peterson. Like I said, we have correspondence that's laid out well this morning, asking for about 15 accounts that we're asking for the reconciliations for. And Sandy has been correlating and trying to get all that data provided to us. And I know that if you're doing through correspondence, they're working with DZA, the audit firm, you know, to try to figure out who's going to be handling certain audit steps, if that makes sense. And that email was just this week trying to coordinate who's doing one for the audit. So, I don't have a timeline, unfortunately, for you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Tommy. Appreciate you stepping on and giving us an update.
Thanks, Tom.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Y'all give me...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is fiscal year '24.
Jennifer, on the finances, do you... That's statistics and...
Connie, everyone should have... I gave everyone two packets. If you didn't get them, they're right in front of Charlotte. So, for our cash flow, for our income, for our operating receipts account, we brought in $1,751,136.72, which is a decrease from last month. If you can see the prior month that is right before, of $955,705.45. For our retail pharmacy, it's $416,486.43, which is a decrease of $89,714.34. For our merchant account, $108,274.03, which is $39,797.12 increase. For our money market, it's $13,619.59, which is $1,065.24 increase. For Evita-Five, it's $4,653.81, which is a $10,018.28 decrease. Harry Ackley Memorial Interest was $2.26, which was a $12 increase. And we also got $471.58 for our CDs for Harry Ackley. And our operating dispersment was $29,910.02, which was $29,415.4 increase. But the reason why... Or decrease... The reason why we got that money back is because we're switching from Lincoln to Nationwide for our retirement, so they had to give us our money back. But we're going to have to... We have to give it back to Nationwide. And for our operating expenses, for our accounts payable and payroll, it was $2,084,196.70, which is a $32,738.94 increase. We got a return item, so like a check back that wasn't good, it was $296. The hospital district pharmacy Cardinal was $90,455.17, which is $2,893.20 decrease. A retail pharmacy is $428,139.65, which is a $98,267.12 increase. The merchant fees were $5,240.12, which is $1,124.48 decrease. Our care credit was $5 for the fee for the month. Our Evita-Five fees were $1,731.22, and that would be $3,726.80 decrease. So, our total monthly expenses was $2,610,63.86. Our outstanding AP checks were $364,649.29, which is $44,099.12 increase. Our total income after the expenses was negative $650,158.71. So, what happens is we get... We wait on, like, funds to come in. So, it looks really bad, but like over the weekend, we had over a million dollars come in for our costs or expenses. So, it just... It's the way our money flows in and out. So, I should be able to put another $600,000 back into our money market within the next few days. And I wanted to show you guys this... Well, actually, there is some more reports here. So, on the second page, you can see like the money market transactions. The only transaction that went into the money market for the month was the interest. And then I did give you guys copies of the CDs. I don't know if you guys are aware of the $45,000 CD. That's the Harry Ackley Memorial. And we don't touch that CD. That's interest off of that. A CD goes into the Harry Ackley Fund. And that fund is specified just for education. And there's some... Yeah, that's what that money's for. And then there is the copy of our CD.
Yeah, that's a board designated button for scholarships or things.
Yep. And so, if you look at this graph, this is our bill analysis graph. And this is one of the cool reports that is coming out of stage. And there's a ton of different reports, so I might give you different reports now and then. But on the second page, I broke the codes off so that you guys can tell what it's for. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So, bottom line, you're paying our bills with the money convenient and you're not touching our reserves. Of course, we are touching. They get replaced very quickly.
Yeah. So, we did... For payroll, last week, I did have to move some money. But we knew that we were having money come in, so we're just going to move money. We're going to try to move $600 back. But we're doing... We're still doing well. None of our accounts are wrong.
What would that turn down in the money market at the present time?
At the present time of the money market? It was...
Yes. We're going to put in another $6,000 and put that...
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That will put us on the four.
Yes.
Four value plus the $2 million in the balance.
And then, of course, our interest goes up. We don't... It gives us percent...
Excellent. Any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. In the SharePoint, I put the stats. Stats for February were up over budget, up over last year's volume. Inpatient days totaled 180 per month. Patient base was 20% inpatient, 49% skilled, and 31% underpaid, I think. Skilled days were 138% of budget compared to 46% of last year. AR visits were 106% of budget compared to 7% of last year. Radiology exams were up as well. If you look at ultrasound, we've added more ultrasound exams and we've increased a tech that can do ultrasound. Those were 188% of budget and 312% of last year. And then with our MRI, increasing the amount of slots that we have for MRI available, we were 120% of budget and 236% of last year. So, those services have increased by then. Again, PT visits were up. Manor days were up from last year. So, again, we see an increase in services in our statistics. So, then also, in the packet is the overtime hours that we look at every month. Overtime hours were up a little bit from last month by about 50 hours. And again, most of those hours were in nursing, acute care, and manner. And then also included, we added the clinic provider stats, which is a breakdown of the number of visits by provider. So, you guys can take a look at that. And if you have questions about that, let me know. And it's broke out between Newcastle and Upton visits. And there's a couple of years worth of data there. And then the other one that's there is the accounts receivable one. And so, that is broke down. If you go to the bottom of the spreadsheet... There's a spreadsheet for the hospital.
Can you explain that column B?
It's the percent collected per cent. So... I actually... There's ones over here where I added... I just re-formatted it so it's an actual percentage and it's easier to understand. I also added in averages. So, you can look for trends.
Is there any way we can separate insurance to like Medicare, Medicaid, and commercial?
Yeah. That's something to do.
Yeah, that's very easy to do with the reports.
Yeah. I think it'd be more useful.
Yeah.
So, roughly, what you're saying is that our averages on commercial insurance...
So, this is all insurance, not just commercial?
Off of her...
Oh, off of her.
Off of everything. So, this is commercial insurance. 35.38% is what we average per visit. Getting reimbursed, does that connect?
No.
So, what's this? Is it percent collected insurance?
That's a percentage. So, we collect... That means we collect 55% on average. We collect 55% of charges billed. Right. So, if you bill out $100, you can expect that your average reimbursement will be 55. So, the other 45 would be contractual adjustments. Not across all insurance. Right. With Medicaid and Medicare.
Right. Right. That's why I thought it would be better to...
Yeah, and we could separate it out.
Because it gives us more information.
Yeah, we could separate it out.
And fly to it then. The self-pay is... It looks like 15% of this. So, if you get reimbursed?
No, it's 15% of your clinical...
All right. Interesting.
Right. Where is that?
Self-paid.
So, so, percentage... The percentage collected. So, we had... Now, you're looking at the first page. That's hospital.
On hers?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. It's hospital.
Okay. Got it.
So, clinic...
Okay.
The clinic's on the back. So, we're collecting 15% of what we're billing for health kits.
Right.
Which means we need to do a much better job on the front end. Right.
So, does anybody understand this report? I mean, is it... Do you want?
So, it's...
I mean, we'll pick this up.
What you usually do is you use a report like this to compare with your AR reports to figure out if you're actually collecting the... Like, right now, we have a 4.5 days decrease in AR, but we don't know if that's from collections or from write-offs. So, these reports, when used in conjunction with AR reports, gives you a much better picture of what's actually happening with your collections.
Is this data on old data, basically? I mean, so this...
This data...
This hasn't been reconciled. I mean, this stuff hasn't been reconciled.
This data comes directly out of EBITDA. That's where we do all the billing That, that's where we do all the billing and receiving of, of funds.
Okay, okay.
So it doesn't really matter whether it's
Okay.
You're looking at different years.
Right, right, yeah, there's different years. So the, so
So we'll have maybe next time, on January, February, March-ish.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you, Piper, this is really awesome.
And then the other, uh, spreadsheet that I put in the fourth packet was this three forty B spreadsheet. Well, then the other, uh, spreadsheet that I put in the fourth packet was this three forty B spreadsheet. So, um, we have the three forty B, um, up and going again for our outpatients and for our ER providers. And so our biggest, um, place we're gonna see that is our outpatient infusions and injections. So it's broke down, um, by month. And so for December, um, we saw a savings of four thousand two seventy nine. Um, for January, we saw a savings of twenty three thousand. And for February, we saw a savings of eight thousand. So Joy will continue to keep this up, so you'll have a, a report every month about the three forty B.
So this is just our clinic?
No, but we can't claim the clinic, this is just outpatient and ER providers. We can't claim the clinic until they're on our cost report, they have provider-based.
Provider-based.
So that's the, we're gonna stop it, okay?
Yeah, that's when, well, the increase should be about a hundred grand.
So we just did, we just did our cost report, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, did we miss the boat?
Yeah, they can't, we can't wait till the next
We can't, maybe, no?
No.
So they're not provided by you?
I know you told us.
We're working on that now. Could've been just documentation that wasn't submitted correctly. You have to go all the time.
You, you yourself.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you, is there anything else you need, Piper? Well, we have a finance meeting, and, um, can you see if she can?
Is fine?
I think it's that Mary Stelka.
Someone heard of it, Val or?
Oh, it's a kid, it's a kid. Okay. We met, um, at eighteen. Piper went over that, just what she went over, and Jennifer went over, she just went over. Epic AR days, or fifty nine point seven AR days. Okay, which is really good, it's, it's a decrease of four point five from last month. Um, professional billing, AR summary, is thirty percent, thirty seven percent of our, um, billing is thirty, uh, self-pay, and sixty three percent is insurance. So our self-pay is like a very, a little bit carry of our business. We also discussed Better Care Advantage Plans and how it's been really difficult to get reimbursed from them. All hospitals all over are having the same difficulties. Many hospitals are, um, terminating their contracts with Advantage Plans because it's just too hard to get money out, back out of them. So we did the thirty, three forty B, she just did that. Projects that we had coming up, we're gonna talk about those later. Okay. Randy will fill us in on those. Anne wanted to discuss the discount for self-pay, and it was reinstated last week. It's gonna be a fifteen percent discount if paid within the first thirty days. Uh, Randy's, uh, planning the credit cards, we had thirteen active credit cards on file, and, uh, he's gonna reduce those down to two to three, uh, credit cards due to the fees. Bank fees are really high on those. And then he provided some photos of the manor roof, there's snowpack on it, and, uh, we could see where some insulation maybe needed to be added in some, at some point in the future. So we may be looking at that at some point in the future. And there are four rooms at the manor that are retiring for repair. And then join our meeting at five fifteen. Do you have anything to add?
Seeing that we talked about, and Sir Kelly was agreeing, and we can encourage Kelly to get that information to to there. So
Light a fire.
Was the floor damage related to the walls?
No, it wasn't.
No, it has to do with the foundation, and there's so many, so there's concrete foundations, there's wood foundations, there's dirt under there, so it has a lot to do with, uh, with the foundation, consists of, uh, what we call that, uh, core drilling and stuffs.
So do you, do you, is there anything that we can help with as far as getting Kelly to get that stuff to them?
Yes, I've got some things in the works that I certainly know how to do. I hope we get that information to us into the ASAP.
Okay, we're gonna move on to quality. Kim, you're up.
Med staff credentialing, we just have one, Natalie McManahan, she's a nurse practitioner with Align Providers. Um, we have a contract with Align Providers to help with our ER coverage if we need it, um, to choose one of few that ultimately come through. Um, she's fresh, kind of out of school, like the way that she graduated in twenty one, is what I saw. So, um, there's nothing concerning in her file, um, no malpractice suits or anything like that, so.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a motion to approve, uh, Natalie Mc
McManahan?
McManahan, uh, FNP.
I'll make a motion.
She makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Nick seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
You get the duties today.
You did it for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, and then moving on to med staff. Pharmacy, we went over back orders, um, Joy said we're keeping up on our supply chain issues still. Um, we've had any critical supply shortages in-house. Um, and then she did talk about switching to generic Advair, uh, because Medicare's not covering brand name Advair, so we're gonna be switching, um, so that we can get that coverage in the reimbursement. Um, we talked about injectifer, which is an iron infusion. So we have venifer right now, um, but injectifer is the two-dose series, and it's offered outpatient. It's a shorter, um, span for the patients, so we're, they're gonna start looking at doing that. Joy said it's Medicare-approved infusions. Some commercial insurances are kind of hitting this with it, but for the most part, that she seems, that it seems like they are covering, but, um, just have to make sure, just because there are some that won't. Um, we talked about probiotics. Um, Joy wants to change the formulary option of probiotic usage. We have a bunch of probiotics sitting on the shelf, but nobody's ordering, nobody's buying. Um, they're just gonna sit there collecting dust and not spending money on them. So eliminating those out of the formulary and just bringing them down to two. Um, one's a really cheap option, um, which is the acidophilus. Um, it's recommended first due to the, due to the cost, and it can be crushed for our residents over there that need it, um, so you can crush it. Um, and then the other one is Floragen, it's a live probiotic, um, requires refrigeration, and it, she said it's sold mostly in the UTEC pharmacy, so, um, the doctors approved getting rid of the other ones and just sticking with those ones.
So the shelf ones are getting in?
So there'll still be some on the shelf.
There will be.
It'll just be reduced down now. Um, and then radiology, we talked about, um, Jamie and Jamie, they've fully done carotid trainings, but they're not quite ready at that go time to be, uh, doing the outpatient quite yet, at the time anyways, I don't know if that's changed.
Yeah.
Um, and then ultrasound is booking one to two weeks out because they're seeing an influx of testing, which is good for us, you know, seeing that influx, so, um, we're keeping to be with their ultrasounds. Um, the lab, um, Jim presented some information about a urine drug test for fentanyl that can be resulted in five minutes. Um, so that's, would be helpful when our ER, if somebody comes in, they can test for that fentanyl, our urine, normal urine drug screen, um, that we can run rap. It doesn't test for fentanyl, it's supposed to be an extra option. Um, the nursing home report, at the time, we had thirty six censuses. Um, we talked about being licensed for fifty eight beds, um, but keeping unit six as a COVID overflow. So unit six, if you guys aren't aware, is that brand new section down there, um, keeping that COVID isolation if we have to move any of the residents down there. Um, at the time, they were currently on a COVID outbreak, um, so they did put admits on a hold, except for, um, we did have a couple residents out in the community that were unsafe to be in the community, so we did bring them in on a special case. Currently, Melissa did want me to touch base, that we are at a thirty eight census. We brought three in out of the five that we've got on the list, so we've got a couple more coming, um, in the upcoming weeks here.
The staffing is good for that?
No. We still have five temps in the long-term care, but so far it seems to be okay. We're kind of getting back to our December pre, um, you know, we had a huge hit in December, so.
Are those TIPS nurses or CNAs?
What's that?
Are they TIPS nurses or CNAs?
CNAs, CNAs, yep, yep.
Did you say my census was thirty eight?
Thirty eight right now. At the time, in my shop, it was thirty six.
You're not in your hole right now, right?
No.
Oh, you are?
Yep, it's open. At the time, it was on a hole because we were a COVID hotspot, and we didn't wanna introduce COVID to anybody that was healthy, so. Um, home health report, um, Heather had a nurse resign, and her last day was the thirteenth, so Carmen's been helping pick up, but she did hire a new nurse who'll start June.
June third.
June. So just kind of taking admits.
As long as Carmen works five days a week, we're just Because she's, she's enjoying retirement.
She fails as a retirement. Um, is this nurse, new nurse, how's the experience?
Um, it's Allison Ferrell.
Oh, you're capable, huh, great.
Yes.
Great, that'd be good.
Okay, and that's it for med staff, so then moving on to quality. Um, we had thirty two incidents in Action Q, um, and we discussed a few of them in particular. Um, patient satisfaction surveys, um, about twelve hundred surveys were sent out, and fourteen and a half percent were, came back, so it was about a one percent decrease from last month.
Is that the online?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Does that, I had one person tell me that the, it goes out, but it shows Monument's logo. Is that?
Hmm, it shouldn't, not for B Trail, not for B Trail. Because they don't have any association with Monument.
Oh, I didn't think so, so, I don't know, maybe she had been to another doctor.
It might be Presley.
Could've been. Okay, I didn't think so, but I wanted to check.
Yeah, it shouldn't, I mean, maybe next time, they should get a screenshot or something, and just show it. Because a bit of showing Monument, that it shouldn't, that's an issue, but it shouldn't be because they don't even have Monument's logo that much of themselves, so it shouldn't have that branding on it. Um, temp staff, we talked about that, five CNAs in the manor, one RN and acute. Um, we talked about the Daisy slash Petal Award. I don't know if you guys have heard of the Daisy Award before, um, but it's a big nationally-recognized award, um, at hospitals for nurses. Um, it's to, um, remember one of their patients that had passed away from an autoimmune disease. The family kind of created this foundation that's just grown internationally, um, surprisingly to them. So we have applied for it to be here in our hospital, we're going to be getting it. Um, hopefully, here shortly, we've got our first committee meeting, uh, next week, but the week after, to kind of get everything nailed down, and we've got branding coming. Aubrey sent out our nomination form on Facebook, I don't know if you've seen that or not, to kind of get it advertised, that the nomination forum is open and accepting nominations, so that we can hopefully do our award. We'd like to do it in June, depending on how many nominations we have, we might have to push it later into the fall, and then hopefully get on a schedule where we do it June, July, or any January, um, separate from the recognition banquet, just so that it's a little bit extra, extra special, um, not kind of crammed with all the other awards.
Do the patients nominate, or just?
So patients can nominate, staff can nominate, and doctors can nominate. Um, they prefer it to come from patients though, but, um, anybody can nominate, and so um, and then we have our selection crew will blind all of the nominations, so nobody will know any names, and then they get to choose, and then we get to have a party, so.
Is that a yearly award?
We're gonna do it annually.
Annually.
Yep, yep. Um, they recommend it with the amount of nurses that we have to do to awards a year.
So is this just state or nationally, state?
It's nat, well, it's actually international, some of like the international hospitals have the Daisy Award.
Been around for years.
Okay, um, so the Daisy Award is strictly nursing. Um, so then we kind of created an alternative Petal Award, and that's for your non-nursing staff, so your CNAs, your radiology, your lab, anybody that can come into patient contact that can also get a nomination, um, just so that they're not left out.
I'll skip you there.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So we'll create a special award for them, we'll get the branding, um, so that they get an award twice a year as well, so. More coming on that. Like I said, we haven't had our first committee meeting yet, so I'm hoping maybe next, or a meeting after we've met, maybe we do a little bit more education on those, so. Um, credentialing, we went over that. Um, the long-term care, our five-star quality rating, um, the providers are getting really good about doing outpatient testing. We only had two transfers. Um, one was to the ER, she came back to the manor, and then one was an admit, um, to the hospital. Um, the resident safety concerns, we were a COVID hotspot, we had sixteen residents infected with COVID and nine employees, but we're out of quarantine, and no masking, and all was good. Um, infection control on the hospital side, um, there's seen a decrease in the upper respiratory viral illnesses, so that's good news as well. Um, the ED wait times were down, um, so we're getting our patients out pretty quick, um, from the time they enter the door to discharge or transfer.
What is the time due?
Um, so arrival to discharge is ninety one minutes. ED arrival to transfer, so transferring them out, um, a hundred and fifty one minutes, and the goal is to be on a hundred and sixty. And then arrival to decision, so the provider deciding if they want to transfer them, twenty six days. So you see that kind of gap there because sometimes the provider knows they want to transfer the patient, but the accepting provider says, well, can you maybe order this and this before you transfer them? Or, you know, maybe we're waiting on EMS.
I was gonna say, probably waiting on EMS.
Yep, yep, so, but EMS is actually being really great, so.
Really?
Yep, yep, their times are great. Um, we just met with them a couple weeks ago, and we only had one issue where they couldn't take a transfer, and it was because they were dealing with that shared incident with, um, that police officer, so that's totally understandable, so. Um, home health, doing great with their med reg and CNA oversight. Um, the clinic had a great month for their survey return rates, it was twenty one point two eight percent, which was about a six percent increase from last month, um, so that was really great.
Good ratings on those?
Mm-hmm, yep.
What were the ratings?
Um, we were in the green for our top box, I believe our top box score was around ninety. I'd have to look again, I can put it into the board SharePoint forty, if you like, um, but it's all green, comments are overall well. Yep. Um, pharmacy, we kind of talked about the three forty B. Um, HR's working on payroll errors, just checking to see how many types of special, um, techniques can be cut after payroll's been approved. And then just employee file accuracy, making sure that everybody's education is in there correctly and documented correctly. Um, and then AR, at the time of quality, we had quality a little early, um, the AR was, AR was at sixty days, but you said it was about to be so it's down perfectly, so. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Piper. All the reports, you do that. All the committee reports.
I mean, that was absolutely awesome.
Scotty, were you gonna do the twelve committee report?
The minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in the folder.
They're in the folder, okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to old business, radiology update.
Um, so we are moving forward, the PO was placed for our new
So we are moving forward, the PO was placed for our new X-ray machine last week. They needed a set delivery date, so I gave them Monday, June third is our goal date for the equipment to arrive. So we're starting the process of, basically the thing kind of hanging us up right now is getting the Unistrut, so the support for the actual X-ray machine itself, we had the architect here yesterday, we're waiting on Phillips to send us back the drawings because of where our lights are in the room, we have to kind of adjust the Unistruts, but it shouldn't be an issue, we don't anticipate any issues. Ron, we're expecting the quote to come in for flooring within the next day or two. So we're just kind of trucking along, we'll do new paint, new flooring, get everything rocking and rolling.
Okay, good job.
So we're excited.
Thank you.
Did you already sign the contract for the financing with Phillips?
Randy did.
Okay, because First Bank came.
First Bank.
First Bank, First Northern. They, okay, so they just said that they would have liked the chance to match.
Yeah, and I told him I would, too, it's a half a percent difference, but the board decided to go with the, 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 when, you know, hopefully in the future, we can do that.
We have CTU projects coming, so.
Yeah, Todd is a very nice guy.
Anything else? Radiology update?
Busy.
Busy?
Moving forward with ultrasound, so. No, I think we're, it's gonna be good, we're on track right now to have the room installed, fully operational by surgeons, so.
Having the two MRIs, MRIs working off?
We didn't end up going with that.
Oh, didn't you, okay.
No, no, we're just with DMS, but they're giving us four days, I think we did. I want to say we did twelve, yes, on Tuesday. So we are really, we're, we're moving a lot, there's some whispers of them maybe moving us a day, but if they move us a day, then they might give us a whole complete day, so we'll just see what happens on that, but I'll keep you guys updated. So I know customers put this room in as well, this exact room that we're getting, and they're super happy with it, their radiologists are happy with image quality, so it's nice to know that the same room we're getting is a room that Monument's installing, so. It's gonna be really good for us, we are just gonna use the portable during downtime, so. I don't think we're gonna have any issues, providers are aware, so I sent out a pretty detailed notice to providers to let them know, and keep them in the loop.
Yeah, be great, I want you to patients. The HVAC update, Mike Lasting was here yesterday, we'll do a walkthrough of the HVAC. And they're going, actually Ron's putting together a mock-up room, working with Melissa, to see exactly where the fan volume units will be, and the space that would be allowable for, for one patient or two patient. Looks like we would only cut down four patients overall, so that's really not too bad, so. We'll do a mock-up for the board to take a walkthrough and see where those fan volume units will be placed, and then move on from there. Some savings that we could possibly save is the two four-ton units that they originally designed to be on the rooftop. That we would have put on the outside on concrete, that would save us thousands of dollars in, without tearing into the roof, which we know would create problems down the road, so that would be a substantial savings there, so Mike will give us an update on that as well, so. And once those mock-up rooms are done, we'll invite the board to come and take a look at the mock-ups. Kind of got that, Mike was here and we looked at it, and we did, you know, we, we looked at the business office and we went ahead and, I went ahead and had Mike draw up the blueprints on moving the business office to the basement. And that still does not give us enough space, but it creates, creates more HIPAA violations with the hallways and everything else, the doorways and, and everything that's there, so we're not going to look at that alternative measures, whether, you know, we invest in the clinic across the street and look at the parking for the patients, to where it's not so sloped. We look at the back parking lot for the places, I don't know, we're gonna come up with something, but we are out of space, we can expand from the clinic side on site, we can expand long-term care on site. You know, I've heard from the public, you know, not only long-term care, there's no long-term care biz, but assisted living, built aid care, you know, in the town hall meetings, some of them that, that were held, so we're just out of space, so. With, you know, I'll take, I'll take a look at the parking over there, and we might just have to move towards the clinic that we currently have and look at alternatives and go. We just don't have any space here in the hospital or on site or on the grounds.
You know, we're getting talked about putting on this, like, you really wish you, because that parking was there.
Right.
Was satiated for that travel, and it'd just be an addition onto that.
We, we could do that, it'd be about two-point-three million dollars, what I, from a square footage standpoint that I was looking at, I mean, we've got several options to look at, and it's just, the board needs to decide, once all the bigger things, they don't know what we want to do, how quickly we want to move, and go on from there.
That was, did you consider that?
Yeah, I have, they're just adding on just a couple areas for the clinic.
But the Maureen plan expanded us right onto somebody else's property, too, so there was that.
Must not go that route.
Are you talking the ditch?
Her plan, it, it encompassed property that we didn't own, it was too big of a property.
Squatters' rights, I guess.
We own the hole.
Thanks for that.
We own the hole.
I know, we got, I was told that yesterday.
So as long as we use it for improvement.
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay. Anything more on that one?
No, I will, I will get the information on adding the clinic on, I think, at the next committee board meeting, just, just to add on, and then what I find out across the street, on, you know, the back parking, I, I will look at it from a structural standpoint, how much fill is in there, but also how much space and, and, you know, parking spaces we could possibly fit, fit in there.
Okay, new medical staff update?
Yes, I mean, we still have, you know, Dr. Haberly is still very interested in coming, hopefully we can get the financial assessment done, we'll look at that. We still have, and there's two additional physicians that are possibly looking here as well. They've been on our website, they've been zooming and watching the Zoom meetings, actually, and looking at the community. But we still have fortified specialists that just want to come here and set up clinics. As you know, we have two providers, hopefully now, we have Mike Carpenter, that is retiring, maybe seventeen, and then Kristen, you know, or last, there'd be people that might have, you know, who had two provider spots open, and then they both, Mike sees a good amount of patients here, and then up, and of course Kristen pursues, so we gotta really take that into consideration. You know, we can bring in interim, a couple of interims that go in the spot temporarily, but then long-term perspective, we gotta, gotta look at.
This doctor will come in soon, August, you might?
Yeah, there are some plans, change of plans.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, I ain't talking about the doctor that is here. Was there a pain in the doctor's system you need to?
Yes, Dr. Baca, yeah, and he's still very interested, we just wanted to look at the financial, and see what all from an injection standpoint, how much revenue we could bring in from, in doing his services, and then his bosses coming in with the medical staff as well.
Okay, community needs assessment.
Yeah, community needs assessment, I talked with Ready Health. They've been working with the Wyoming Hospital Association on doing community needs assessment, very good group, I really like them, they're really down-to-earth, personal, but professional, and they're kind of different in the way I've seen community needs assessment's done here in the last four to five years, where they actually come into the community, they go door to door, and they do their surveys, instead of getting on the phone and saying, hey, you like this service, or what kind of service do you like, thank you, goodbye, hang up. They actually come into the community and visit with, you know, the community members and leaders and hospital board, they actually meet. When they're doing their survey, they meet with the hospital board three times, so I really like their approach. Their, their cost is around twenty-six thousand, so I might want to get a price back from the other firm that they've been working with as well, that we had worked with before on the last community needs assessment, so. And as that information goes forward, I'll, I'll let you on the board.
How often do you need these assessments?
Three years, two to three years?
Yeah, every two years.
Is that, it's a mandate, isn't it?
It is.
It's a mandate for CMS? So, new business, H and H leadership solutions contract.
Yeah, as you know, I mean, that contract was approved at the last board meeting, and I don't know if Stephen wants to elaborate on that or Dottie?
Hello, Stephen?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
How are you?
I'm doing well, I'm here in Dallas, Texas at a veterans conference. All, all I would elaborate on it is that we are actively en route with everything, we have, you should have in your work packets an overview of the plan for the operational assessment, including dates and times, expected delivery points. And if I may, I can give you an update as well on the CHRO. The CHRO was selected this week, we presented fifteen candidates. Or, sorry, we interviewed twenty candidates, we presented the three best qualified candidates to Randy, and, and he conducted interviews, ultimately selecting Karen as the interim CHRO. She has been onboarding with us and Randy today and tomorrow, and then she'll be on-site providing in Rapid City Sunday, with her first day starting on Monday.
So Monday, yes, in three years?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So where is she from, what's her life?
She's in Sioux Falls right now. Very nice lady, very intelligent, down-to-earth, and not afraid to roll up her sweet and dig potatoes or pick tomatoes, and
You want to meet our backup?
She put advice at the hospital, sent for help.
Yep, I was just gonna reiterate that, Randy, yeah, she's coming out of Logan Health in Montana, she's also done time with Sanford. She's done multiple turnarounds in the critical access environment, those are larger systems, so when those systems acquired smaller hospitals, she often went in and was the one who would do a lot of their turnaround. She's also a behavioral-based psychologist in terms of HR aspects to help build teams, and using that behavioral-based communication styles and, and education and leadership development to help foster team growth and cultural change in organizations.
Yeah, she's also an HR law, she's the HR law as well, so, like I said, she's not afraid to get her hands dirty and dig any dirt or anything.
Yeah, Karen's a lot higher, too.
So, when she gets here, are we going to have the opportunity for the staff and the board and the community to meet her?
Yes, once our orientation is complete, then we'll have a, a, kind of a open house for the board to meet, commander to meet, employees to meet, whoever wants to.
It was interesting when he was removed, there's quite a few people that will remember my comments at the time, because it came after Ogden, reportedly, I guess you should say, because it was reported, and then they claimed that, he claimed that didn't happen, but we all saw the letters where he made the chairmans of the board sign that we're gonna do this and that and the other thing, and we're not gonna disobey, and.
We're not going to disobey, I love that, I love that part, we're not gonna disobey.
Pretty much, that's what I got from it, reading it, is aye aye, captain, we will follow your rule. It kind of made me look a little different at Driscoll, and then this year's made it even.
Well, you did just look different, let's, come on, you gave him a nickname, even.
I gave him a nickname, he was saved in my phone still to this day as dictator Driscoll, and I still don't feel bad about that, because Weston County hasn't seen him once leading up to this session.
So, when she gets here, are we going to have the opportunity for the staff and the board and the community to meet her?
Yes, once our orientation is complete, then we'll have a, a, kind of a open house for the board to meet, commander to meet, employees to meet, whoever wants to.
Okay. What's the other question? Me? Did you guys want this assessment? Okay.
The operational assessment.
Right. So by May third, they should be.
Yes, our, our intention is to be there, I believe, May second and third, to be able to present the assessment findings to the board, and also to the senior leadership, and present, and be, be complete.
Any questions?
Where are we at with the clinic manager? How's that going?
We wanted to actually elaborate on that a little bit further at the, not this board meeting, but the next board meeting on, you know, I'm gonna get you over there, but what we want to really look at from a clinical standpoint, but also from the revenue side and get some board input on that as well, so.
So why, why next meeting?
Well, that's the same question. If you recall, you asked that the last meeting was, would we have input in on that, and I said, yes, you could have some input on that, and that's what we're doing right now. I went to.
Well, well, if you need to, then, I mean, that's, that's why I'm asking. Are, are they supposed to be kind of given some assessment?
On the hospital.
On the hospital, and the clinical assessment, okay. So would you rather wait to choose their assessment?
Yeah, but I, I think.
The way to go.
From that and from a financial perspective, I'm looking at that.
And the other thing that sort of has to do with, with H, H and H, is so we, we talked about the last meeting, that, that, you know, Karen said something about scheduling, rather than having all these extra meetings, scheduling, you had a second.
By, by, yes, by, yes, yeah, I think that was.
How we plan on it, matter is it on schedule, and I never seen it.
Denise was on schedule.
So, I think they were talking first and third.
That's what, that's what I heard from Allison, was the first and third, but the first.
First and third what?
Thursday.
Thursday.
So, but the first Thursday would be a special meeting.
Because it's too sick.
Right, so that's where I want a direction, can we make this, you know, do I set it out, or do I just send a special meeting? No, this is everything, so I will do that.
So we may need a couple months.
So I would, I would just, we just send out special. Yes, and what we had talked about was deciding on Monday, and what we would put on the agenda, and then on Sunday, and then on Tuesday.
So. Right, so just, so just a little background, when we had talked before, we said we were gonna do bi-monthly, and we talked about, you know, what days did we want to do, so it was, it was a recommendation to bring to the board tonight to say, one of those meetings should be on a board night, so we don't have to have an extra meeting, and then why don't we make the first one, the first Thursday of the month, so if that's good with you, then that's fine, if you have a different idea, it's a good time to talk about it.
And just to be clear, it would be a special meeting for the ones that are not scheduled during the regular board meeting.
Right, first.
So, so what is, so is it just a technical thing that it's a special meeting, or is it?
Yes, it's a, it's a, you have to call it a special board meeting if it is not your regularly scheduled meeting time and date, and so you only have your regularly scheduled board meetings on the third Thursday of the month.
So I, I think it's fine being a special meeting.
So, I think it's fine being a special meeting, but the sooner and the more notice that we can give, the better. Like, if it's a special meeting on Thursday, you don't want to send it out on Tuesday.
No, but if everybody agrees to the first and third Thursday, we can put that out right away.
Sounds great.
Do I have a consensus to do that, or...
When did that start in May?
Uh, no, it started in April.
That's the next month, April.
Yeah, April.
April 4th.
And go through, through this time with H and H.
That's the reason why we're having...
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
So is that, does that appeal to everybody? What time did you want to do it, Bobby?
And that's up to you guys. You know, the regular board meeting, we can do it during the board meeting, or after the board, right after the board meeting, but the first Thursday, do you want to start at four or five? It's, you know, whatever's good for everybody.
Four thirty.
Four thirty for Nick. I'm open. I'm retired.
As early as I can do it.
How about you, Karen, Ian?
I'm going to schedule that to more than I am. I'm fine, either four thirty or five.
Nick?
Yeah, I'm good.
Four thirty or five?
Four thirty works for me.
Are you gonna come?
I just said the last one.
We knew we'd go to you. I'm on the fourth.
So, and...
April 4th.
Then the fourth, I mean, the...
And then the board meeting, nine?
Eighteenth.
Right, is that, so will be five thirty, or would we...
I think it'd be five thirty. Yeah, I don't think we should change it. So, April 4th and four thirty.
What was that decision, what was that decision?
April 4th, April 4th at four thirty, is that good for everybody? Yes.
Yeah.
Four thirty.
And what about the board meeting day?
Just the same time as normal.
So do you want to start at five and include that as part of the training?
Yes. I think that would make sense.
Instead of more education?
Instead of more education, we do the five o'clock for the training for H and H. That work?
Is that okay with you, Stephen and Thomas?
Yeah, we should.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Very good. Um, we got the update on the chief human resource person appointed for the election canvas board.
So, in the March minutes, we need to have the board make a motion to appoint three people for the election board canvas. So, one needs to be the secretary or an appointee, and then two can be electors. And if, I do have a member of the community that said she would do it, Tara Parsons, said she would, and I didn't know if we had another board member that wanted to be the third.
So, Nick, are you?
I mean, I could, yeah, absolutely.
Nick, Nick, you're gonna fill in for Jamie, right?
I could, yeah.
Because Jamie can't, Jamie can't be it because she's on the...
So, so we have one board member, Tara Parsons, and then who's the third person?
Anyone else from the board if they want to, and we can...
I mean, I'm happy to help, because I love elections. But I, it'd be better having not two board members, that's really...
No, I talked to Allison about it, and she said that it was okay. So it's a change, so...
Yeah, I'm good. As long as you guys are okay with it, I mean, I can do it.
And then we have one that isn't.
Okay, so, so you need a motion for the three.
I move, I move that we have, can I include Tara in it? She's, okay, so Tara Parsons and Nick Johnson and Carrie Droste, we have them on the board.
I'll second it.
Okay, you have a second?
Me.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. It's in the minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to governance committee. We didn't meet this month. I was saying, foundation board, did you guys meet?
We met last, yeah, we're a month different.
Right.
At that point in time, there's, the foundation decided to postpone the daddy-daughter dance, hoping to do that sometime in the fall.
I see, up until one.
But, yeah.
I got your...
Yeah.
So, I was trying to figure out where that dinner, that pizza bar...
Should come back.
Wasn't sure, so I didn't want to write it down.
Yeah. Yep, yep. And, yeah, and sadly, a few people didn't get the words, so...
Let's do that.
Um, yeah, so that's all happened now.
Ethics committee?
I'm pretty mad.
Okay, you got a report? Go ahead.
I might need to report Michael. The most, what I, again, we talked about recently was we're having trouble, they're having trouble with the patient, that's not creating the staff flow, and so we talked about that. That was one, and so we decided that we needed to have policies. We talked around, we want to enforce the potential, because if some of our staff is being assaulted, then it's police matter. The other component was what to do if we have a provider who was potentially being sued, you know, what is their obligation of care? So, once again, we decided we needed some policies. And we talked about how we needed, with those policies, we needed, they needed to apply across the board, not just to one certain patient or one certain provider.
Well, except, one of the things we did talk about, though, was that would not...
Yeah.
Yeah, they could receive other services, but...
If a patient was suing a provider, we didn't want to force the provider to take that patient. But if other providers or the lab or X-ray were willing to, to take that patient, we wanted to stop them.
So there would kind of be a checklist, I guess, of sorts, that it would be potentially involved in, and we turned that over to...
Kim wasn't there.
I'm surprised. They're on vacation.
How class they take that tour.
She's sitting on a beach right now, let's tell you.
Would the ombudsman be included in this? I mean, I mean, surely there's gotta be some ombudsman response to abuse. Well, what do you mean? It's, ombudsman usually deals with long-term care abuse. It could be either way.
The ombudsman has been involved in this issue.
Oh, has, okay, okay. That's, that's my question.
And we talked about, you know, not just this particular patient, but, you know, in general, like, what can we do? We have to have the safety of our employees in mind.
And the safety of the patient.
Yeah, you know, and you can't just say, off the door you go, but at what...
You can't slap the patient.
Right.
You know, those kinds of things.
Yeah, so... That was a discussion. How can we have a safe environment for employees? And yet provide...
A safe environment for the patient.
Right. Exactly. Any, anyone else need to be there?
So is the ethics committee going to do, make the policies?
Sounds like Kim's gonna make the policy.
We were gonna approve the policy. How to approve it? Tell it to bring to the board and approve it. Kimberly's gonna work on the policy, and then Nick from Allison's office is gonna get us some guidelines for the other policy.
Okay, good.
He's talking to some president.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's, um, president communication would be next.
Okay, Denise is gonna give out for me two documents that, that I want the board to have. One is, is that I had put together a piece from the chairman to the community to thank them for looking at the, the H and H presentation, talked a little bit about what we're trying to do as a board, and addressing the fact that we have problems, but we're working on it, and we'll continue to keep them updated in so many words. The response that I got, I know I had sent that to the newsletter journal, and because Mr. Bonner had said that he would publish informational articles from time to time for us. The response that I got was the other document that you're going to get, which was a response that was sent to Randy, Denise, and myself, and CC'd to Mr. William Curley, Mary Stroka, and Carrie Droste. So because he included one of our board members on there, I felt that it was important that the whole board see it as a part of the transparency that we always talk about. So, I think when you read it, you can, you can make up your own mind about what you see there. Part of the problem that they, that he did talk about was, is the confusion over the special meeting that we had the other day. And so, I just wanted to say that I believe that that agenda was not clear, and I'm sorry for that. But there was a piece where we thought that we were gonna have to have an exec piece of the meeting, and it was decided last minute, and not by any executive committee, as stated in Mr. Bonner's other, because we don't even have an executive committee. But it was decided that we do the personnel piece first and get that off the table so that H and H could do their presentation. They did it, they did it for, they did part of it for the board, but they were really, what we went into exec session for was, is to talk about personnel informations with H and H that was totally appropriate. And then we came out into public meeting and had H and H do their demonstration and their, we had it as a presentation. What it really should have said was, you know, consideration to, to adopt them, their contracts. So, that again was our mistake. So, going forward, we will meet, as Denise had said, we will be meeting on Mondays before the board meetings. We were, we were actually meeting on Thursdays prior to, but we're gonna meet on Mondays and make sure that the agendas are clear, and when we have special meetings, we'll do the same. And I know that we have, it looks like we've had a ton of special meetings, but as, as it was stated, I believe in the newsletter of journal this week, that we have been through a lot. We have had to hire two new CEOs. We've had a lot of comings and goings of personnel. We've had some issues, as stated, as stated with the, you know, the clinic, and we've had other people talk about problems with, with morale, whatever, which we're diligently working on, and is a part of the reason that we did hire H and H to come in. So, before we go any further, I want, I need a motion to ratify the contract that we decided on during that special meeting that includes the $45,000 for the assessment, and also for the $108,000 plus or minus for the CHRO, so that we have it once again in public. May I have that motion?
I still do.
May I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, once again, it's approved in public, and we have it noted in the minutes, but I think, I wanted to be sure that you saw the responses from Mr. Bonner, because some of the things that he said, frankly, just weren't true. And, but we can continue to talk about that stuff, and we can continue, I think it's more important that we continue to talk about positive things, that we continue to show and prove to the community that we're here for the, for the good of the hospital, the employees, and the community, and that we are transparent, and that we will continue to do whatever we need to do to make everything as good as possible. I will tell you that it was a cue of the chairman letter as being, as being, excuse me, I lost my transport, a part of my reelection piece, which is absolutely not true. It was really just what I said it was for. And the other thing is, it wasn't, had, it didn't have anything to do with a special H and H meeting, and that's why Jamie didn't put it out, because it wasn't anything to do with the meeting. It was just a message from me, the chairman of the board, to the community, to thank them for watching the H and H stuff, presentation, and to also let them know that we're here for them and that we're working hard. So, I just wanted that to be clear, and wanted to make sure that you saw it.
Bobby, I just wanted to say thank you for giving this to the full board. I wasn't sure if it was my place to do that, but it was definitely your place, and I think it's the right thing, and I thank you for doing that.
Well, you're welcome. I also wanted to mention that I read in the article today that was posted about the H and H meeting, that somewhere in small print, it said that this, this mind letter and the response that Mr. Bonner said to us were gonna be on their website today, but of course, I couldn't see it anywhere, so that's why I wanted to be sure that you had it.
Well, I'm sorry that he's responded. I don't understand.
Well, and I, I don't think it personally, but on some things that he is stating here, I don't need a pat on the back.
Some things he is stating he's not wrong, I bet, so...
Other things he's saying he is wrong. But I don't know why he singled out to certain people. When he answered with an email, if he's trying to relate to board, he shouldn't include every board member, not just one or two. And if he's gonna, you know, serve it correctly, instead of one community member, if he has a thousand community members, they should go up to a thousand community members instead of one or two. That was my suggestion as well.
What, what I would like to just say is, is that, I've said this a million times, I said it on my website, I've said it in the chairman note, that if anybody has questions, they are certainly welcome to ask any one of us, and especially myself. Just come and ask me, I'll tell you the truth. And I'll always tell you the truth.
Did you respond to this at all, Karen?
I didn't.
Did you receive it? I mean, did you have to see it, read it?
But like I said, I wasn't sure if that was my place to, what, what, do you, you know, I don't know, other than to CC's man, a lot of stuff, just because of my other roles and then...
Yeah, because this is, this is the second email I got in a week, I mean, that he included Carrie on, which I can't understand. He's including... which I can't understand. He explained to me Carrie and myself. Last time I had to do the health insurance premiums, which I entered to Mary. So I'm not, I'm not sure. I keep getting emails. I just keep answering back on, on what they're wanting and giving the correct answer yesterday. I worked with Sharpe and Piper on the insurance premiums and stuff, so I'm not sure.
So I, I think on, and this isn't quite your point, this is sort of in the same thing, but I think it would have saved a lot of trauma if, before we went into that executives, if we had just switched it. If we would, especially since William was here, since we had somebody from the public here, Walter was here. We should have just done like we always do and do the, the public part of the meeting first and went on to the executive session. And, and I, and I should have said that myself.
But it was on the agenda that it was.
And as it next.
Right.
In the future, moving forward, that should be.
That, I mean, if, if no one had been here, it wouldn't have been a big deal at all.
Right, right.
But with people here, we should have just made that decision on the fly and switched it.
Well, also I did see this article in the Gazette. So the Gazette did post this.
Oh, did they?
They did post.
So you're getting two different interpretations, or at least there's one paper that's willing to do it and another paper that's not willing to do it or to do this. So there, like I'm saying, there's, it's opinions. I mean, I see, I believe, I believe, I believe, I believe. And you can say that all you want, but I'm saying there's one paper within the county that did post this that didn't feel it was, they didn't have the same opinion as this newsletter did. So I just, for what it's worth, it's not the consensus opinion amongst, at least media, at least in Western County.
Right.
Yeah, I think the state said it will not post anything unless they are paid posting. And whether, and the Gazette will.
It's not for PSA.
No.
Stephen has his hands up. Stephen has his hands up.
Stephen.
Okay.
Board members, may I speak as, as an advisor that you guys have hired?
Yes.
On a couple of things that I hear, if I may?
Certainly.
So one, I've, I've read your bylaws thoroughly and gone through them and it's pretty clear that the only money, only person who can speak on behalf of the board of Western County Health Services as Western County Health Services is the chairman of the board. That's the only person who can speak on that or the CEO. So I think that would answer Carrie's question. If she, if you ever have any doubts, it should always go back to the chairman of the board and allow them to speak on behalf of the board. And then the other question I would bring up is, in transparency, I heard that, well, there are things that aren't true and then I hear there are things that are true. If the goal is to be transparent, let's talk about the things that aren't true or perceived to be true so they can be addressed in this session with the board and in front of the community so it can be put to rest, whether it is or isn't. That would be a recommendation, whether for this meeting or any meeting. If there's an issue, don't let it fester, address it and attack it head on and so you can address those challenges and move forward.
I think we should split.
Split up? Why?
I want to meet new people, people who need me.
Meet new people? You're my left kidney.
You only need one of me, man, and you have two. There are plenty of people out there who are dying because they don't have one.
Really?
You'll be giving the gift of life.
I could be a hero.
Yeah, it's all win-win up here, buddy. Why don't you go and save a life, pal? You're doing the right thing.
Address it and attack it head on and so you can address those challenges and move forward.
I agree.
So you want us to read this letter out loud then and address it as it come up?
I, I think it would be in the best interest to read it out loud because there are several names, there are at least a couple of names that are sitting here right now. I think as Bob mentioned, that the public should be aware of.
Do you want to read it? Dottie, since it's your letter.
It's actually written.
Dottie, ready?
Um.
Oh, I guess Randy.
Randy.
Yeah, it might be better if, if, if somebody there reads it because maybe could hear better. I'm happy to do it. Just let me know.
Do you want to read it? My voice is shot. I'm sorry.
Bob posted on his website.
Yeah, and I tried to look on the website, but it wasn't pulling up. So I don't know if there's some reason, but I did try to look at it.
To preface this, basically, Dottie had written to him asking him to put in a letter from the H and H regarding our, our H and H.
Well, was, or was it this letter right here?
This letter.
And it was.
Yeah, and then, and his response to this letter was that letter.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So you think it's reasonable? You want me to read the one?
It was, it was, it was just a chairman update for the community in the midst of the turmoil to tell them that not only do we hear everyone, but we've hired, we're bringing H and H on board. You know, we're looking at H and H, because that was before we even had the vote. We're looking at H and H to come in and help us with some of these issues. So I'll be happy to read this. It'll take a bit. So it's addressed to Dottie, Randy and Denise.
Okay.
I have to inform you that the letter from the hospital board chair will not run in the Newsletter Journal, but my reporter, Mary Stroka, may choose to quote some parts of it for stories she's doing on the hospital and this meeting in particular. I have a number of concerns about the behaviors of the board in this matter and with your so-called efforts at transparency. I will lay out those concerns in this email on the record for a board election that will occur unless it would be unethical and irresponsible of me or any other news outlet to run this letter and suggest to our readers that it's not a biased account of what we have been taking, has been taking place at the hospital. One A, I agree to let Mr. Lindauer submit a column every other week despite the fact that he has refused to speak with me about the newspaper's role in covering the hospital for the community and his unfounded criticisms of the newspaper's prior coverage of the hospital and its board in the past. I agree to allow the column in an effort to be abundantly fair to those who feel the newspapers reporting on the hospital board was too critical, but Mr. Lindauer only submitted one actual column and then followed it up two weeks later with a hastily thrown-together short report that was submitted after our deadline. We ran both of those pieces and spread to the fact that they contained very little actual information and were simply self-congratulatory pats on the back for Mr. Lindauer and the board. Like this most recent letter from Dottie, they were thinly disguised advertisements for board members and the CEO and nothing more.
Before you go on, I'd like to make the correction. Dottie is our board chair and she speaks for us. So I disagree with Bob's assessment that anything coming from her is an advertisement.
Because she's currently the chair.
That's because she's currently the chair.
But I do think it would have been wise with Bob having made that agreement with Randy if Randy would have just said, given Bob a call and said, is it okay if I give Dottie this?
But it also shouldn't have been done during an election. Dottie's never written a column before and then all of a sudden she writes it, a column a month before her name is on the ballot. That isn't fair either. So Bob does have a point there.
He does, but conversely, we haven't had the issues we were facing lately in hiring someone else to come in.
It's true, but I wouldn't.
So it's timing.
As a person who's running campaigns a lot, I wouldn't have done that. It cast doubt.
Well, if I may, I would counter that. It's done all the time in campaigns. The president of the United States spoke at the State of the Union and it was effectively a campaign address and he's the president of the United States. The letter that she submitted to, the paper wasn't submitted to one paper. It was submitted to every outlet and posted on your Facebook page and was meant to be a message from the chair. And up until she's, you know, not elected or another chair has spoken, she would be the appropriate person because your bylaws also don't direct that she should designate anybody else in the organization to speak on her behalf as the chair. And it doesn't address anything to the point that the chair should not, or whoever is being elected should not have the authority under the chair to speak on behalf of the organization. So there's a policy opportunity for a fix that I think we can address as a policy change to the bylaws.
That's a very good point and, you know, this, this whole thing, that's why I'm not really sure why we're reading it here, but because it's an opinion. You have one opinion, Bob has another opinion and basically the voters are going to decide what their opinion is in a month, so. We can all differ. It's okay.
I don't necessarily think this needs to be.
I agree.
To be right.
I just take it from the speaker.
Yeah, I know, I should, I do.
And I did agree to fly down on my own to meet with Mr. Bonner down in Colorado on my own to speak to him about the paper many times. And Denise was witness because I, I sent the email. He's not called me. He has not called me personally or from a professional standpoint, say, hey Randy, how you doing today? Can we talk about the hospital? Just an email.
When I was chair, he was pretty rough on me too. So just to say that, you know, I mean, I got several calls from him. So I don't know what is, probably is with me or, or anybody else on this board, but he definitely has feelings.
I was just going to say Stephen, sorry, sorry.
I did not get calls from Bob when I was chair, but.
Stephen was just trying to say, we're, we're debating as a staff, as a board here, what's true and what's not true. And I don't even know if the community or anybody knows what we, what we're disagreeing on. What are we disagreeing on?
No, I'm sure. I don't know.
Exactly. No, I'm not even talking about that, but like, as you said, there's stuff in there that's not, that's somewhat factual, but where? I mean, what, where, how does this community know what we're even talking about? That's why I think it's important that he says, we're going over the letter so we can at least talk about it. And where are we differing? Where are we as a board differing on this? Because I don't even know. So all I see is a lot of opinion. This is my interpretation. Everybody's got a different interpretation, I believe. I don't, I mean, this is all basically, I mean, there's some, so looking for facts, I'm trying to highlight them, where there's facts and, and I don't know, I don't know how we want to move forward. Do we want to keep reading this or do we want to, talking in circles, but I'm just.
Well, we're just taking these recommendations.
Right, I, I get it.
It's a variety.
Right, so does that mean we just want to, so we're just going to point out?
Okay. Okay, two A on the second page. At least two members of the public that I am aware of, Mr. Sprague and Mr. Curley, were told they could not attend the Monday's special meeting because it would immediately go into executive session.
I already told you on the meeting on that.
Yeah.
So how do we handle that?
In the future, I think we, we always kind of talk about that. That we would, that we would need, if there was, if there were people here, that we would change our agenda to make sure and do them first and then go into exec session.
Did anybody tell Mr. Sprague and Mr. Curley that we would be opening it back up to public after the executive? Did they want to come back?
Yes, and I objected completely throughout the whole thing. I objected in executive session, out of executive session, before executive session and after executive session. And I personally called Mr. Curley as soon as we got out of executive session and invited him back and he was already home.
Okay. But this says could not attend the meeting. I think you said you could attend. You just had to wait till executive is over. I don't know.
Semantics there, but.
No.
But I think it was you trying to.
No, I get it, but I'm just saying, by saying he could not attend, saying that you can't come to this because.
Yeah. It kind of makes it sound like they weren't allowing.
Was it done in, was it, did we do it well? Absolutely not. Could we, if you could take it back, I think we would.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, number three.
There was no information given to me before I left, because you called it executive session. It said there was a substantive meeting coming in the public on identified issue. So that I, I left thinking the business of the meeting was being done in executive session and I left with that impression for a good reason.
So it's sort of saying nobody conveyed to you that we were going to go back out of it and then you made your.
Nobody conveyed that there was a substantive issue for which notice was given to the public that would be discussed in public.
Okay. So we handled that wrong, is what I'm saying. That's what we handled wrong. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, number three, if Mrs. Farder was the chair for that meeting, shouldn't this letter have come to the board? I may not, because I am still the chair.
I spoke to that. It had nothing to do with that meeting.
Well, it says on the, it is our hope that everyone was able to listen to the presentation from H and H to accept solutions to forward a trust.
That was the first, the first one, not the second.
Okay, well, when I, just reading it, and I'm not, I'm not questioning your motive, Dottie. But just reading it, that was, what I thought when I read the first thing is the first paragraph there, oh, she's trying to talk people into going to listen to the H and H presentation since nobody was here.
No. No, because it just came out at the same time. These two things were, were, were sent in this email at the same time, but I had written that chairman's statement at least two weeks prior to.
Okay.
And number four.
So I understand, I understand where you would think that, but they are not connected.
Okay.
It appears from the agenda, the decision had been made to go into executive session right away. Well, why was that not made clear in the notice to the paper or the public? Wasn't it? I thought it was.
So. No, I had already, I already apologized for that. The agenda said that we may have a need for exec session, but we decided to do the exec session piece first to get it out of the way so that we could bring them back and fin, and have them do their, their presentation, their, their actual presentation of their, of their business that they wanted us to vote on. So, but I apologize for that. That was, that, in the future, we'll make sure that that is much more clear so we don't have this incident again.
Yes, and the executive board has repeatedly proven with the mass, vast majority of the concerns over its empowerment, parentheses, abuse of authority, lack of transparency, exclusion of other board members, et cetera, were well founded. There is a lack of.
Right.
So I don't know what to do with that.
There's a, there's a governance committee and we've had many, many, many discussions about that too. So it's not wrong about that, you guys.
Well, it is wrong because there's nothing in our governance committee that ever is not transparent. We put it in the minutes every time we have a meeting.
I guess what I would ask is, where's the evidence of abuse of authority?
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm just saying, I bring it forward. You say it, you bring it forward. Exclusion of other board members. I don't, I've never felt excluded from it, to be honest with you, but that's me. I don't know if, obviously there's others that feel that way. But where do we have evidence of that? It could exist. I just haven't seen it.
Well, usually on the governance committee, there's three people. If you have four, then you have a court. And that's not good either. So then you have a special meeting. So you have, on committees, you just have three people, generally two to three people from the board. And that's just the way business is done. I don't know. Why else to say it?
So communication to me, so far as the common denominator among all of this, lack, I mean, the way we're communicating out to the public, the way we're communicating with each other, that seems to be where we're lacking. At least that's my opinion. And I don't think it's by design. I don't think it's done on purpose. At least that's, again, my opinion. However, I think that's, that's what we have to keep working on.
And everything the governance committee does, they bring it to the board for approval. I mean, I don't know how much more transparent we can get.
I'm just, this doesn't, this isn't really talking about governance committee, but like with the example of this, this executive session. I, I, which, and I don't, because it's executive, I don't know, I don't know if this is possible, what I said. But like, I think that if I had an idea of what was, what we were going to talk about, and I didn't, like, I don't know who, I assume it was Randy and Dottie, I don't know. If I had an idea of what was going to happen in executive session, that would have been much easier for me to say, oh, let's switch it. It's not that big a deal. You know, and so. And so if there had been, but but because it's executive, I personally don't know how much all the board can know that beforehand, but I do think it would have been an easier thing to make a decision on, that ordering, if we had known what was going to happen.
Well, to the chair, it makes a call, the agenda and the call, you know, we all came because we were told the call was.
Right. Well, some of us.
What, didn't get your man off?
Yeah, you didn't.
Oh, that's right.
That's another, that's another thing to Nick's point.
Agree, because even you didn't know.
Yeah, I can't, I can't understand that.
Grateful for the call.
Okay, and number.
Forty.
Yeah, forty, thank you. The fact that the board is having to hold special meetings on almost a weekly basis would indicate that the operation has become less than efficient, and it's hard to argue with the existence of an executive committee that has contributed to the press of turmoil at the hospital on the planet. Again, there is no executive committee. If you continually, okay, let's go back to the red marks here. Public laws can discourage participation in the public process by the majority of the board, the press, and the public itself. I don't know. Number five, the legality of the executive session itself is greatly in question as it does not appear that the subject discussed under the fall, would fall under the open meetings exception found in the statute. Mr. Sprague was informed with the hospital attorney, or former board, or CEO, or somebody, that this executive session was allowed under the statute, and I believe that was an error. Any comment there?
I would, just for a second, a lot of what he's saying is, to Nick's point, it's conjecture, it's opinion. You have legal counsel to provide you that clear guidance on her vast legal opinion, and that's what the board follows.
I would like to make a clarifying statement on that. When I came to that special meeting, and I was told that they were going directly into executive session, I brought up the concern that H&amp;H, I was informed, was going to be kind of the subject of the regular meeting, and I saw that, I was told the executive session would be under sixteen dash four, four oh five, AII, which is for personnel, and H&amp;H was a contract with a company, and I questioned whether that was a legitimate reason because they were a separate company, if that was a legitimate reason for going into executive session. That's when I was told that the attorney had been consulted and that Allison had informed them that it was legal on those grounds, and I don't know this for sure, but the impression I get is that it was not about H&amp;H. I was not informed about that before I left from that last meeting. Had I been informed about that, it's like you said, communication. I had brought up the subject of H&amp;H. Was that a legitimate reason? I was not corrected about it not being about H&amp;H, but that's the impression I'm getting now. So again, lack of communication, lack of transparency, that's part of what transparency means.
Yes, Mr. Curley.
I'm not Allison. I like her as a person, as far as I know her, but it was my thought that that notice and who wants that mess? I'm very gratified today to see revisiting the decision to hire, because there was no notice that was done, looked like an informational special session to hear a presentation, not to do business. So I'm glad it came up here. I'm a little concerned today that today, dealing with the contract today was adequately noticed at this hearing. But anyway, I agree that you've got legal counsel to okay it, but I just, I think maybe there was miscommunication in there, because she's a sharp lady, and I didn't think it was proper. Thank you.
And I think it would have been nice if at the time when you guys were leaving, if either knew or Dottie, whoever knew what executive session, I mean, had clarified with either William or Walter or both.
Yeah, I'm looking for the communication, but at that time, it would have changed.
So the stuff that we dealt with in.
Executive.
Executive session.
Part of the, part of the reason we hired them in the first place is because of the table. So I think, I think the exec session thing was, it could be, you know, for people's names to be here and change, and so we didn't want to do that in public session. So I think that's what the caution was.
And there were some legal things that we talked about.
Yeah.
And to me, it was a legitimate, I mean, I don't know the law, but the stuff that we talked about could have hurt people talking in the open.
Right.
But it just wasn't handled well.
I think we all agree.
Right. Yeah, no, I keep beating it. Let's stipulate that.
And then the numbers, it says, I believe the board has been poorly advised on open meetings and public records. I believe that your training may be misinformed on other boards in the community in the past as well. Well, I guess that's another conjecture. The hospital board is making conscious choice to interpret the law as broadly as possible, which allows you to filter the maximum amount of information that the public will allow to access, and this is dishonest. I know, we let you, we let you, you know, record us, I mean, we have our own recording. I don't know, I don't know.
That's just his opinion.
Yeah, yeah. And being given a sole source, okay, let's see. It's a long sentence. Basically, being given sole source contracts, which are heavily crowned upon in these instances, are for good reason. I'm not sure.
What has to do?
H&amp;H.
The relationship with the CEO.
No.
I think you have to read that sentence. I thought it.
Yeah, that was just, that was just one in particular consultant at a different company in recruiting herself over for myself and the organization that I was employed with, and possibly placing me at another organization. I don't know, I don't know all the consultants.
Okay, and then we have.
The only, the worst part about this, in which we always talk about, and I, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm in favor of H&amp;H, so I'm not saying that, but but we do always try to talk about giving, doing two bids kind of thing, and we didn't do that with this.
Well, time.
I know, time is of essence, and we already have one provider that quit, has quit over this, and but.
Plus it also costs a minimum of ten thousand dollars to get another quote.
Right.
So I see that there's, so I see that there's reasons.
Really?
I'm not discounting that. I'm just saying that that's where this comes from, because we are always arguing that we need two bids.
Yeah, I understand that, and we will.
But I.
That's not going to change. We're definitely going to.
Right, but but as you recall, I did mention other firms that were around three hundred thousand dollars and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, but.
Right.
You see what I'm saying.
Right, yes.
It says in number two, A, oh, I guess I read that, sorry. This one? Oh, thank you. Okay, well, I think we're done. I don't see more red. Is there anything else that we can bring up now? So I think we've got it figured out, hopefully. Yes, Nick, please.
I think what this is, hopefully, this is a team building exercise. I don't know if it's too late for that, but what I see is that we need to communicate better as a board to each other, we need to communicate better to the public. I think we're learning. I do think we want, the reason we hired H&amp;H, at least my opinion, I'm going to keep saying that, is because I feel like we want to get back on track. We want to get on track with everything, and we feel like these guys are going to solve our problems, there's not, that's not what we hired them for. We hired them because we want them to help us and assist us in moving forward and get an outsider's perspective, because these guys have been in all kinds of different hospitals, they've seen it all. And if you've spoken with these guys, you understand that, us on the board, and that's why we're, we just need some help to try and get this, because we've got a lot of issues. I think you're, the thing that I keep saying to us is, though, we've got to figure out what we, we're, how are we going to move forward? Otherwise, the staff is not going, they need to follow our lead, and this stuff like this that we keep seeing, and then stuff like this, we just, this we can't focus on. Okay, we can't focus on this, because that's going to happen no matter what, we just got to put our heads down, and we got to go, we got to do the work, and we got to find a way that to get better. These are learning opportunities, as H&amp;H said, this is a learning opportunity, what we did wrong, and what we got to do better at. There's everything in there, do we agree with? Probably not, but how do we move forward in a way that gets us to where we want to be? And that's my so fucked speech, but I just feel like that's, that's what we're focused on, that's what we got to, that's our energy, got to focus on.
Yeah, we all, we all should have the same goal, what's best for WCHS.
So hopefully, we're all in the same danger with that, and how do we, how do we get that to the point where we all are communicating in a way that builds trust, not distrust?
Well, I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think, you know, I attend all the meetings, and I answer all my emails, and so I think that's why I, you've said before in the past that I know more than what you know, and that bothers you, but it's.
You're right.
But it's because I, I ask questions, and I, I dig a little bit deeper on things, so I, but that's, and I have more time, you know, because I don't have a life.
I do have a life. I just seem to have ten.
So that's my only thing on that. My only defense is that I do, I do.
I agree. I think trust, communication, and I think this, just let it fly out the door and move on.
I agree. Okay, well, I just.
Stephen, I just stand up, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Stephen.
No, no worries. As a recommendation, you know, you guys have done a great job here, but potentially, you might want to consider having the governance look at, within the confines of your laws, your executive session and how to notify the community. If it is a communication issue, maybe there's an opportunity there to look at that in terms of governance or bylaws, or some aspect that you can improve that piece, so it's a little bit more transparent for the community. There's obviously, you go into executive session for a reason, improve that bylaw, that governance, or that policy that addresses. Sit out there, because I, I think this was a very valuable exercise, to have people sit there and just communicate openly about the challenges and get it out in the open. So congratulations, I think that's a great step forward.
Okay, items for the future?
Yeah.
I'm the one with.
Yeah, totally.
The Weston County Republican Party has organized town halls for candidates for every race in the past couple of years, so we are going to be doing the same thing for the hospital board and the museum board elections, which are coming up. We are going to have a town hall on April fifteenth, it's Monday, at six o'clock. It will be at the Newcastle Lodge, just putting the final details on it right now, but there are ten candidates for the hospital board and three candidates for the museum board, and they will all be invited to that meeting on Monday, April fifteenth. So stay tuned, I'll send out details about that, but.
Isn't it IRS Day?
It is IRS Day, so we can drink a toast to.
Money, God.
You turn it now, right?
Somebody sent it to the cream. Okay.
I have one more thing, which I'm sorry, it'll make it fa, I'll make it fast. I thought, after we went to the training. I thought, boy, I, Allison said, if you don't know something, you need to ask, so I don't know near enough about compliance, and I, and.
There's just some education on that.
I think we should do an board education.
We'll do that. I'll bring someone in strictly.
I didn't even know what it meant. It's not that we should admit such a thing.
Where's your compliance account right there?
We should all know as a board what our compliance plan is, so, yeah, Anne's right that's. Allison and her firm did an excellent job of that training.
I've heard, I've heard nothing but positive out of that, but I agree, I think the board, they can put themselves at risk if they don't know about compliance in detail.
The other thing I would suggest to Randy is review a parliamentary procedure. And Allison, so thank you very much, it was great.
Took a nap.
Come on, you don't usually get compliments, so it's pretty good.
I was so impressed, it was, I just thought it was really beautiful.
Sorry, I missed it, Allison.
I had several, several people from the community call me, so.
Okay, can I move on? Items for the future, April ninth through twelve, twenty-four is the H&amp;H solutions on site, so they will be here asking questions and digging into our issues. May seventh is the special district elections. May eighteenth is the Barley Hospital Association CEO spring meeting, and you, is that open to the board, too?
Yes.
It is, and I printed out the agenda, and I didn't bring it in here.
Oh, okay.
So if you would like me to, I can send you each the agenda, and let me know if you'd like to go, and we'll get you.
It's in carpool, I got it.
Okay, and then.
Madam Chair, since we're on the upcoming items, how can we ensure that the public has the information for the upcoming special meeting on, in April?
I think Denise is going to put that together, right?
So I have, there's a place on the website that is for information and news, and I will have it on Facebook with a link to that page, and also on that section is also the hospital districts bylaws, so people can see it.
So.
Thank you.
Nick, we could possibly update that section, because I went looking for the last couple of agendas, we couldn't find them, and the minutes for our meeting ended like twenty twenty-three or something, so.
It's been updated.
As I've looked today, because I looked at like two o'clock. I did a search for the agenda for tonight's meeting to see if the public would be able to find it, and.
The agenda is not on there, but I will, I will look on that one, but the other minute should have been there, and if they're not, I will look into it.
Yeah, they ended in twenty twenty-three.
Is there any, is there any other business? Do I have a motion to?
I think it needs to be Connie.
Not a journey.
Recording stop.
Do we have a special? I don't think we have one.
It's on there, that's why.
Yes.
It is on there. No, I don't.
Do we need one? That's the question.
Hello?
And I do make the motion that we adjourn the Weston County Health Services Board.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned at.
Do you want to frame it?
You cover a lot, don't you? You cover a lot, don't you?
Thank you, everybody, have a good night. Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.